Welcome to the town council meeting, the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, and it is, can you believe it? Already December 2nd, 2024. Uh, the pledge allegiance is first on the agenda, and I'd like Mr. Ernie Bunch to lead that if you would, sir.
Thank you.
All right, pledge allegiance.
Thank you, Ernie. Uh, some public announcements. Uh, first of all, can you believe the sun devils? There's a number in this room. Brian, are you a sun devil? Even the fire, oh, all right. Number of sun devils in the room are very happy and we're looking forward to a good result Saturday in Texas. But getting there was fabulous. So, well, no, win or lose, it's great.
Good, right.
Uh, we'd have some people in the room I'd like to introduce first. Our former town manager Kerry Direk is in the room. Kerry, just stand. Our town judge, Paris Condola, is in the room. Judge, welcome. And, uh, we're gonna have a different, uh, program tonight. Uh, we'll have an executive session after the regular town council meeting concerning potential rodeo. Uh, and that should, uh, start somewhere right after 6:30. Next on the agenda is the call to the public.
I have no one wishing to speak. It's time.
Okay, town manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, I just wanted to, uh, provide some good news. Um, the dedication of the fire station number one, um, that we've been anxiously waiting to be, um, constructed and, and completed, um, is just about nearing completion, and we're gonna have the dedication at 9:00 AM on Tuesday, December 10th. And so we have a little bit of a ceremony. We'll have, um, uh, uh, refreshments and tours open to the public that day. So we encourage people to be there. It's 9:00 AM, Tuesday, December 10th. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. On the consent agenda tonight is the approval of the September 9th, 2024 council work session meeting minutes, approval of the September 9th, 2024 special council meeting minutes, approval of the September 16th, 2024 regular council meeting minutes, approval of the September 24th, 2024 special council meeting minutes, and approval of the October 7th, 2024 regular council meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Mayor, if I may, you know, I'm, I'm gotta get used to, to not being up here. I'd like to discuss items one through five. I could be kidding second.
Okay, so, um, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, uh, seven zero. Next, we have a presentation. We have an outgoing council member with us to say to you, Mr. Ernie Bunch. And Ernie has been there in a seat there, or he was over here for a while. Um, and he's been in his seat for a while. For 19 years, Ernie has, has, uh, pulled a plow for this, this town, and I cannot count the thousands of, thousands of hours of voluntary work that he's done for us. Uh, I'd just like to mention a couple of things that I think particularly stand out. Uh, one is he saved the rodeo. Uh, when the rodeo was gonna move, uh, move out of town, uh, Ernie was the leader of that effort and, uh, got the ball rolling, and today our rodeo is healthier than ever and looking at bigger and better things. Second is, uh, the town is in a very substantial financial position. We have $35 million in the bank on a $14 million general fund, so that's about three years worth. And we have a fire station that's going to be, uh, dedicated next, uh, week and a half. Uh, and, uh, that was done without a, without a, uh, property tax. And I think, I can't think of anyone else, any other town that's done something like that. So, uh, Ernie has had many, many years, uh, on the council and has just done a wonderful job. And Ernie, uh, on behalf of the town, thank you so much for your service. It, um, the, 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 the town has been the better for you, having served on council.
You're gonna get me emotional here.
We have some presentations. First of all, Ernie, we want to present you with your tag. We won't need it anymore. The second thing we have for you here is something that I look at in great interest. This is a, uh, a Volvo tires. From Montana Silver Smiths. If you're in the Western field, you will recognize the name Montana Silver Smiths. There you are.
Thank you so much.
And the next one is, is the real difference. On behalf of the town, I'm presenting Ernie with this Cave Creek belt buckle. And it says, "Staten Cave Creek," has our seal on it, "2005 to 2024. Ernie Bunch, Mayor and Councilman."
First of all, my apologies for lying to people, uh, all these years. When I ran in 2005, I said I was gonna serve one term. Um, not, uh, eight additional, uh, campaigns after that. I gotta say that, uh, it's, it's bittersweet to see it in the rearview, but at some point, I gotta start taking care of me and, and stop worrying about everybody else. And I really, I really appreciate that. And I just wanted, wanna tell you that have a place up in Yarmulke County in the mountains, and if, if you're ever up there and you're on a dirt road and you wanna stop and talk about Cave Creek, I got a sign for you.
Oh, thank you, Ernie. Um, we have some other people in the room that'd like to say something about Ernie. Uh, Ron Solvay?
Ernie, it was eight years ago you became mayor. I was your first vice mayor and, uh, was with you, and, uh, I was given this bunch cap. And for some reason, I think I'm the only one in town that has one. Yes. And that was eight years ago. So I've had as many people as I can, uh, currently that are on the council, were on the council, folks, uh, that in the administration in the town signed this. So now you have your official, I have 20 years here. I know it actually was 19 and a half.
Nineteen and a half, yeah.
Congratulations. But you can use that and share it. Keep the sun out of your eyes.
Bill Bessor?
Oh, God.
Bill's from Oklahoma, so hang on to your seat.
Blood for the red river being, uh, my old Norton Dennis and I'd have been an oaky too.
Could've worked on that rivalry, but. Ernie, I just wanna tell you, thank you sincerely for everything you've done for the town and everything that you've done for me. Ernie has worked for years to educate me about how things work in Cave Creek, but he's worked hardest at trying to teach me how to be brave. He mastered that. And so, thank you, Ernie. I look forward to many years of friendship in the future. Take care of yourself, brother.
I do the best I can.
Is that adequate for brief?
That, that was, that was, you know, that, I had never heard you that. You come up there and say nice things, and that was the only time you ever shortened the speech.
Well, Ernie, uh, I hate to tell you this, but, uh, you need to go sit in the audience. Next, we have Judge, uh, Paris Condola, who will start to administer the oaths of office. Judge?
I, Robert Morris.
I, Robert Morris.
Firm.
Firm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office of mayor.
Discharge the duties of the office of mayor.
Town of Cave Creek, Arizona.
Of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So do I affirm.
So do I affirm. Next, if we could have the other council members step up, please.
Council members, please raise your right hand. I affirm, I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office of council member.
Discharge the duties of the office of council member.
Of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona.
Of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So I do affirm.
So I do affirm.
Congratulations.
Uh, we're gonna take a 10-minute break. Uh, we'll reconvene at 6:25 so we can take some pictures. So, take a break. You read the town code, section 30 dot 21. I would like to make a motion at this point. I move that Catherine Royer be appointed as the, uh, vice mayor to serve that two-year term. Uh, I base this on the outstanding efforts that she's made in the town, especially in, in the area of water, communications, in, uh, the, the donations that we make, bringing, uh, order, uh, to the donations that we make. And I think she's done a marvelous job and has earned a second term.
Second.
Discussion? Other nominations or discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote on it. All those in favor of Catherine Royer as, uh, vice mayor for the next two years, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Catherine?
Thank you so much.
You're back in for two years. Next on the agenda is council discussion approval authorization of town manager to execute a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with the Foothills Carrying Corps for the dispersment of opioid, opioid settlement funds as approved by resolution number R 2024 dash 14, presented by Director of Community Risk Reduction.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Um, we're here tonight to continue with the process of, uh, setting up the correct way to distribute the opioid, uh, grant funds that we get from the state and from the county. And I have Mr. Brent Downs with me tonight from the Carrying Corps. Um, we did, uh, exhibit A was for the Cave Creek Unified School District. Exhibit B, which is before you tonight, will be the MOU with Brett and the Carrying Corps, and he can briefly tell you what they're gonna use that money for, if you like. Brett?
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to be here, Mayor and council members. We're gonna utilize the funds to do a community-wide volunteer program. Cause at Carrying Corps, we have over 300 volunteers that go into people's homes and meet with our neighbors, drive them, take them on appointments, you know, over 4,000 a year, 20,000 meals a year. You know, we serve over a thousand people in this community, 300 in the town of Cave, of Cave Creek. So we're really invested in the community, and we wanna train our volunteers on recognizing opioid abuse and mental health. So opioid abuse amongst senior adults is up 30% nationwide. Marijuana use and abuse amongst senior adults is up 40% in just Maricopa County. So these are issues that we wanna address with these funds by training our volunteers. But not only that, but making it a community-wide effort. So Steve Woods from Tech for Life has got us a website so folks can, from all nonprofits, any community members interested in being involved in the training can participate in the training. We're gonna bring in experts in the field to do the trainings for the volunteers and the community members so that everyone will be aware of those signs and what they see regarding mental health and substance abuse. So Steve has the website already procured. All people sign, anyone signing up with interest will go through Steve's website at Tech for Life. That way it's not just the Carrying Corps. You know, we, I love all my nonprofit friends, but you know, we start talking about having volunteers sign up. We all have volunteers. So it's great to make it a community-wide effort, and that's our goal at Carrying Corps, is to make it a community-wide training for all nonprofit and interested community members to come and learn more about the issue. And so, Steve, you have anything about, okay? Any questions?
And, uh, as we looked at the earlier, um, resolution 2024 dash 14, the money is already, comes directly to the town from the state and the county. And so each year, we'll see how additional funds, as it gets deposited in our account, we'll work with the budget officers and make sure that we have the, the money to be distributed, and we'll work between Carrying Corps and the Cave Creek Unified School District to make sure the programs um, of education and training go to the community. And so that's where the money's gonna go, the grant money.
Motion from council.
Have you enjoyed working with Cynthia?
Well, the best. It's been great. The question is, Cynthia enjoyed working with me? I'm a bit of a handful, for those that don't know me.
Okay, seeing none, there is a public comment on this?
I have no one wishing to speak.
Okay, so Cynthia, you'd like to make a motion, I believe?
Yes, please, Mayor Morris. Motion to authorize the town manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with Foothills Carrying Corps for the dispersment of opioid settlement funds as approved by resolution number R 2024 dash 14. Second.
Cynthia, you have the motion?
Uh, just as we've discussed previously on council, uh, for, uh, the dispersment of funds, um, through the school district, CCUSD, and now through the Carrying Corps, we're hitting key elements of the community, both the youth in the community and the elderly who need our support services and can benefit from additional education and monitoring.
Where the second?
I have the second. So, the Carrying Corps does quite a bit of, uh, good things. I was reading your webpage today, and I was very impressed, uh, with what you guys do, and this is something we have to support always, so.
Other comments from council? Seeing none, uh, this is financial, so we will have a roll call in this place.
Councilmember Ockerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Aye.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rose?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Next, we're gonna take something out of order. We're going to, uh, do the presentation of the quarterly fire report.
Well, you are.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, this is the quarterly report for the first quarter of fiscal year 2425, which is basically July, August, and September. We'll leave the dates to you because of all the issues that are going on. Uh, but we have a short presentation that we'd like to go through, and we'll kind of do a quick recap of it. I have Chief Tobin with me again today, who, uh...
Is that better? I have Chief Tobin with me again today, who, um, when I mess up like I just did, he'll be there to help me out and straighten it out. But, uh, this is again the first quarter of, uh, fiscal year 2425. Um, you have the numbers for the first quarter. We, we track it by month. We track it by types of calls, medical, fire, service. We track it by training, which is part of our agreement with the Daisy Mountain, to make sure we have the training. We submitted their annual training report to you last time, so that you have that. Here's a quick overview of the types of calls we go on. Um, obviously, medical emergencies is the largest number in types of calls, and of those, when I go through the reports, um, falls are our number one type of call. And so down the road, we should talk a little bit, and I'll work with Chief Tobin and his AMS emergency medical groups to see if we can do some type of educational program for that. It's, uh, calls, or it falls at commercial and at residential properties. But you can see, that's the fiscal year, the top one, and the bottom one is the calendar year, and I track it both ways where you, to see if there's any major, um, variances. The quarterly major notes in the first quarter of this year, our biggest is- issue was wildland fires, and we had them in town and we had them around town. I'll, I'll back up just a little bit. We are very proud of what we've done with the fire station and the, the way that that has come across with the Pearlman Architects and with the FCI, um, constructors, and so we've worked real hard at that. We worked real hard to get in the station to be open next Monday or next Tuesday, and I think that you'll be proud of the station. That was the one comment I made to the council when we first started this journey, was that it's a facility that you will be proud of and it will be good for our folks. Um, we did the inspections on the initial engine, the new fire engine that the town council paid for earlier this quarter. And at the end of the quarter, we purchased and obtained a new fire tanker. All of those will be on display next Tuesday for you to see. And, uh, again, very nice vehicles, very nice equipment, and the town and, and Chief Tobin can talk about how firefighters liked that type of equipment. The, we had some major fires. We had our major first alarm brush and residential fire in September off of Lone Mountain. And, um, I think Mayor and Vice Mayor, you've commented before on, when we have a major incident, it's amazing how much resources we get, and the resource backup that we have as part of the automatic aid. It just shows each time what a great decision that was to become part of that system. Um, we assisted on some other major fires. Um, Scottsdale had a couple, second alarm major fire over off of, uh, by the boulders that we've assisted with, but when we do that, um, the crews get, and our station gets backed up by the region. They come in and, and support it and co- cover our area. Um, we had a major fire that, uh, Chief Tobin, if you wanna talk about the point fire, which was, uh, started over by New River, and I'll turn it over to you for that.
Yes, uh, Jim, Mayor, council members, the, um, the point fire was not, uh, in the town of Cave Creek, and it wasn't in the Daisy Mountain Fire District either, but, uh, it was large enough to where the residents were very concerned about that incident, uh, getting worse and threatening the town and the district. Um, it never actually, that, that never actually happened, uh, despite how it looked. It never was really much of a threat to the town or to the district because of the work that, uh, the state and the federal government did with containing that fire. Nonetheless, uh, we were involved, the Daisy Mountain Fire District was involved in the planning of, of, uh, the extinguishment of that fire, the incident command team that was put in place. Chief Wilson, who's here with me tonight, was involved in, in the strategy behind keeping that, uh, fire in check for the amount of time it was in, uh, that it was burning. And then conversely, you know, this fire happened on September 13th, and generally, at least years ago, that would be outside of what would be considered the peak fire season, uh, because we start getting more humidity and the state resources start to be moved to other, uh, locations that there's fires throughout the, the, the western United States. And that certainly was the case during this one as well. A lot of the state resources were elsewhere. Uh, so that added to a little bit of the consternation about the point fire. So Daisy Mountain Fire with our state, uh, partners put in, put in place a three-person type six, which is the same type of a brush truck that you have here in the town. We staffed that with the state resources, and we patrolled along the area, um, of the Tonto National Forest in between the Tonto and the, and the district and in the ha- in the town. So you might not have known about it, you might not have heard about it, but our resources were deployed, uh, to assist the state with the containment of the point fire. So pretty happy with how that worked out. We're, we are lucky to be, uh, part, in partnership with the state. We work very closely with them cause as you know, the district is a very wide area, uh, that has a lot of, uh, vegetation fires throughout the summer. So we have a lot of experience working with them, and we're a good partner to them, and they're a great partner to us, and it worked out for this fire as well.
And then I would like to mention, as, as the chief talked about, Chief Wilson assisted with us having a town meeting with the Tono Forest Commander, the actual incident commander of that fire, came to town hall. We met with him. He told us what the plans were. We were able to talk about that, so we were able to get additional information out to our residents. Um, it's interesting that our residents think on wildland fires like that and large incidents that we take control of that, and we just don't. The, the Tono Forest has command of those, and as the chief mentioned, we will support that in any way we can, but we can't just take control of that fire from the Tono or from those other ones. So we have to work with them.
Yeah, and neither can we. So we have to utilize all of our relationships that we have to, to work on the containment of those, and we just can't call air tankers in on behalf of the state because the state is the one that's responsible for paying those bills. But honestly, many of those resources were also moved to other places, and were difficult to, uh, to have if we needed them, but at that point, at, at no point did we really need that type of a resource to protect the town.
Um, so that was our last major incident that we had during the first quarter. We've had some since. We'll talk about it the next one. Daisy Mountain also hosted for us a, uh, community open house at the, in the middle of September to talk about the construction and building of the second fire station, the one that we were gonna split. And Chief, if you wanna talk a little bit about the progress on that?
Yes, I will. Uh, so, uh, we have a lot of good news to report to that. The Daisy Mountain Fire District Governing Board approved the financing and the contract with Willman Construction Company to begin the construction on Station 144, which is at 24th Street and Cloud. So it's essentially on the border of the town of Cave Creek and the Daisy Mountain Fire District. The town goes for about 26th Street in that neighborhood. So the station is at 2402 East Cloud Road, right on the corner, 24th Street and Cloud. We're gonna begin construction on Spire Station 144 right after the first of the year in January with an opening about one year from today. So, uh, things are moving, uh, uh, forward with that, and of course, part of that is the shared finance, shared staffing of that, uh, facility with the town and the district. So we'll have, at the minimum, we'll have a four-person paramedic engine company housed at a Station 144 probably in January of, uh, 2026.
Which is to benefit for us is our west side residents, as we've talked about over the years, getting that additional coverage on that side. Um, and then, the last thing that I have for you, and we talked about this briefly at the last meeting, but, um, Daisy Mountain Fire was again recognized as a gold mission lifeline member from the American Heart Association. They were the first one in Arizona to reach this level, and basically attracts the, um, types and numbers and documentations and service that they provide on emergency medical calls. And why that's important for us, as you saw, about three quarters of our calls are emergency medical... And why that's important for us, is you saw about three-quarters of our calls are emergency medical calls, and Daisy Mountain with their service that they provide and their training, and the members provide to the communities have received the highest level of recognition, and so it's well worth it that we recognize them for giving us that level of service on medical calls, which is three-quarters of our incidents. And Chief, if you want to talk about that for a minute?
Yeah, thank you, Jim. Again, we're pretty proud of this. I am continually amazed at the work that my EMTs and paramedics do at Daisy Mountain, and we have great partnerships with Honor Health, which is our facility that we use for our base hospital coordination and our base hospital physician, Dr. Jonathan Madam, who oversees our EMS division. We operate under his license, our certified paramedics operate on his license. Dr. Madam is also a member of our governing board, so we're pretty close to him. And the work that all of those groups do together is what gets us to these types of awards because of just the commitment and the training and the skill that our members have is really, well, just judging from this, it's golden, you know, so the amount of work that they do. So it's really good.
And I didn't include the performance measures in this packet. I apologize for that, but I can get that to the council if you like it, because it is performance measure based, as I know that we've been talking about that with the town for quite a bit now. This rating of the EMS services is, that's how it's done. And then, I'm really proud of the new tanker that you bought. Three thousand gallon tanker. We turned this around in about sixty days, I think. It was very quick. We found it. We were able to look at it. We were able to check out the manufacturing. It was very quality, high quality. And I appreciate the council supporting this, and it's here, and it's ready to go and being worked on. And any additional thoughts or questions or comments? We'll be happy to take those from you.
Counsel? Well, I'd just like to say that tankers was expensive, but the town has very, very limited fire hydrants. And so when you hit back in the woods somewhere in the desert, narrow road, we need something, some way of water, and I think that Daisy Mountain and the automatic aid did such a wonderful job on the Schoolhouse Road Fire that you mentioned earlier, which is in, of course, May. That was just amazing to see. I was up on the hill watching the whole thing happen. We had twenty units there. And compare that to what happened with Okatiya Fire in twenty twenty. I think we can truly say that it's paying off with safety and saving property, because that fire burned right up against the back door of many houses. So, thank you for, Brian. It's great to work with you. Wish the best for Daisy Mountain. Anything else from council? I understand David Phillips had a comment?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I wonder how you came to understand that, man? How'd you know I had a comment? Somebody tell you?
I'm sorry, David.
Did she tell you I had a comment?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I thought maybe because Ernie was leaving, you knew I didn't want to have something.
No, 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 no.
So, one of the things that I'd like to bring to your attention with all the work Jim does, and all the work that's going to constantly be needing to be done, I think we have room now to discuss in the future, having a public safety commission. This commission would be a board of volunteers that would report to the council on fire and sheriff issues as they become issues that we could help educate the public with, and programs and services that Jim could run by them as a sounding board before they come to you. And, you know, he could get their input. We have a plethora of retired fire and policemen in our community. I think we're really lucky to have that base, and I think it would be a nice way to recruit some more volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anything else? Thank you, gentlemen.
If you wouldn't mind, I would just personally like to thank Mayor Bunch for his leadership to this council, and the other council members who were seated at the time that we had the transition to the Daisy Mountain Fire District with this partnership with the town. But in particular, Mayor Bunch was the leader of that group of folks that brought us to where we are today, and how we're going to celebrate next week with a new fire station, and how we're going to celebrate in a year with another shared facility. So I just want to, on behalf of the Daisy Mountain Fire District, thank retired council member, Mayor, council member, Ernie Bunch, for his leadership during that time, and we really appreciate it, amongst all the others as well, but to him particularly tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Okay. Agenda items number three and four, there's, we're going to move those to December sixteenth meeting, because it's not legal. They don't have legal effect unless we move those, so I'm going to ask Councilmember McGuire to make a motion to table those items three and four.
I make a motion to table items three and four for future council meeting.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is, our business is done tonight, so I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and this council meeting is adjourned, and we're going to convene into executive session in the town hall conference room. May I have a motion to do that, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much for coming tonight. Ernie? Bon voyage.